And welcome. We are here at City Hall in McLennan Chisholm and we are about to start the City Council meeting. And there's a lot of things going on tonight with the city. They're going to finalize the budget and there's some issues that are in the budget that we're going to obviously talk about and address. There's going to be a public hearing about the budget and so we'll be, we'll probably be hearing from citizens about that. And also, they're going to be talking about discussion and action regarding consideration of an interlocal agreement for fire protection service between Rockwall County and the City of McLennan Chisholm. And this is basically something that the city has had for, for ages. And this is now, it's just kind of the, what, what happens as, as, as time goes by. We just have to make sure that when, when, when our, when our firefighters are tapped, that they have, that they have, we've got backup from Rockwall, from Heath, and from Royce City and Fate. And so that's what an interlocal agreement for a fire department is all about. And that's one of the things they're going to basically approve. The problem with the, with the council is that most of this, most of what happens here at City Hall doesn't, is not discussed out in the open. This is the most, this is the most quiet city council. Most of their discussion deliberation happens behind closed doors. It's obviously a violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act, but they don't really seem to care. So that's why we, that's why I've sent in to the Texas Attorney General some complaints and the Attorney General is agreeing with me. I've got one more in and so far I've won, I've won all of my appeals and won everything that I've asked for despite the city's attempt to, to prevent citizens from knowing what's going on. At the last City Council meeting, and this is another complaint that is going to the Texas, to the Attorney General, they approved a budget for the fire station, but they did not release that budget in advance of, of approving it. And or, and they did not deliberate it. They did not discuss it. They, just like everything else. And so I suspect that tonight we're going to see more of the same. And so tonight is obviously going to be more of that. And so I suspect they're going to have another hour, two hour long executive session where we will hear very little and know very little about what's, what's going on yet in, in the city. So we are about to start and so I'm going to move the, the camera back over and we'll
May I have one minute here, please?
Sure.
All this is getting us set up and ready to go here. Mayor Shaw will be a few minutes late this evening, so I'm going to kind of get us started. All these, you and Rick are Got it? Thank you for showing. So again, I'll say a few minutes and leave the invitation and then to this. But during the thought, many for debate, many for lines to gather to meet and make a decision, and our direction, and we all, our thank you for, thank you for screaming, and thank you for relationships, and then, thank you for new residents and not so new residents that are here. Thank you for the legacy and the ones that led us to this point. And what I just pray for the new civic leaders of both the nation as they continue to guide our country through terrible times. Our thank you for our first farmers to inspire and to pray for their safety as they work to protect us. And what I just look up the families of McLennan Chisholm, Rockwall County, stands all over this country. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve this man.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas. I want to say, under God, one and indivisible.
I agree. Now, I have the typical meeting rules of the form, or in fact, four times meeting. At this point, I may even like to call this meeting level up to the front. This weekend or this week, we're actually celebrating Constitution Week, so we're going to share a proclamation. Please, shall I go here? I'm out of the one gene that I hold. But it is pretty good, here. So despite everyone being this time.
Okay.
Okay. So again, we are recognizing and celebrating Constitution Week 2020, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic, dedicated to rule a law. And whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of our Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law and 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Nathan Hodges, Mayor Pro Tim of the City of McLennan Chisholm, do hereby proclaim that the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week. And as our citizens, to reaffirm the ideals of the frankness of the Constitution held in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
No, please, stay. It's, it's just a copy of our constitution. And although we were, did our declaration in 1776, government did subtly, and we didn't have a constitution until 1787, and it wasn't ratified until 1788. So all things, if they take it a bit slow time, will be good. So thank you very much for accepting this for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. So this time, I will open up citizen comments. Did we have any submissions this evening? Oh, gotcha. I just asked at this point in time that we hold pass rate comments until the public hearing. And Shelly, can you receive any emails regarding citizen comments? And I have, or I have some other emails regarding comments. So we have just one this evening,
Yes, good evening. Robert Steinhagen, 304 Pheasant Hill Drive. I wanted to make, I didn't know if the city was aware, that a gentleman who has meant a lot to the community, even though he's not a citizen of McLennan Chisholm, Steve Allen, passed away. And he was a gentleman who was responsible for massive fireworks display that so many in our community enjoyed. And I would hope and ask that the city create a proclamation respecting and honoring his sacrifice because he spent a lot of his own money and a lot of his own time to do that. And I would just simply ask that you would consider honoring him, his family, I should say, with that honor. I wanted to talk about two things. One is transparency in the government. Obviously, I said this at the last City Council meeting and, and I was, I was shocked that the budget for the fire station was not released in advance. And it's not, when you have a budget that's not releasing information that's critical. Obviously, the Attorney General is involved in this now. I've, I've already won, the Attorney General has already ruled in my favor as far as open and disclosing public information that the city has been withholding from me. We're in the middle of another one where the city, where the Attorney General is making a decision and where I continue to argue discussion and deliberation should, should occur outside in an open session. Mrs. Westman, you had posted something on social media that you were at first concerned about the 4.2 million dollar price tag of the fire department. But if I'm summarizing this correctly, you, you've seen the real cost and you are satisfied that that's the correct number. I'm not misspeaking, am I? Not misstating your, your, your post? That, okay, if I am, please correct me, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's not 4.2.
What's that?
It's not 4.2.
What is it?
I did, I think you're down 4.2.
Okay. Well, the budget that was approved, you said, what you wrote was, you now understand it and you were, you support the budget for the fire station. That's what you had written in summary. I'm summarizing. You did not?
I have to step in here? This is not only agenda, so it shouldn't have a discussion?
Right. You, you guys don't have discussions. So it doesn't, I'm not real sure why you're concerned. But anyway, my point is, that's great that, that you, you agree with the cost, but the problem is, we still don't know what these costs are. Nothing has been, nothing has been deliberated in an open session as required by that. And so if, if, if there is reason for the, the price tag that you've basically given to the AG CM, I think is the company, you've basically given them a blank check, help us understand why. What is, why, why is 4.2 million dollars, and I believe that's the price tag of the, of the fire station. If I'm wrong, then, then correct, then I'll, I'll stand corrected. Finally, half, half of all call, fire calls go outside the city limits of McLennan Chisholm to people who contribute absolutely nothing to their fire safety. The county provides $77,500 to provide fire service to the unincorporated area of Fire District. Our total fire, the cost of the, of the budget for fire is $761,000. And, and so basically, I have been saying time and again that we need to find a way to get those who are in the unincorporated area to start contributing to their fire safety. To say that that 77, $77,500 equates, thank you, equates to what citizens are paying is outrageous. It's outrageous. There's no, $77,500 doesn't even start to, to, to pay that. What I would recommend is that you can still fulfill your obligation to that fire service contract by responding to fire calls only. You do not need to give the same level of service that the citizens, that the taxpayers of McLennan Chisholm are paying to, to those who pay nothing, who contribute nothing to their fire safety. So I would ask that you would consider that. Thank you.
So we don't have any other submissions for citizen comments. We'll at this time close citizen comments. Item number 6.1, consider approval September 8th, 2020, Council Minutes. I will leave, Shelly, please help me with this. Is there one correction made in the minutes regarding the fire station budget? Is that not made in?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve that to stay for September 8th, 2020?
I'll make the motion to approve the September 8th, 2020, City Council Minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion at all? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we now must agree on the minutes and say for September 8th, 2020. Moving on to item number seven, dot one, received presentation by RCH Water Supply regarding a recent water boil notice and other water supply related matters. I'll leave Jack and Steve here on the half of the water station.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hodges. Thank you, Council Persons, for asking us to be here. I know we've had a, I know we've had some trying times here in the month of August and we're taking all these concerns very seriously and we have, it's been on the drawing board. We have a new 12-inch line proposed and the engineering plans have already been developed for it. It goes from Pullin Road down to Edwards Road, back from Pullin Road to Ed, to League Road up to Edwards Road. And this is a new 12-inch line. It's going to be, and it would have been on the line this year, but the pandemic slowed a lot of things down for us. And the plan, like I say, the plans have been completed and we have plans that are going to go from, that are being drawn up now, that are going from Edwards Road to 548 over to High Point Lake Estates. We also have a, a storage facility acquired at the corner of League Road and Edwards Road. And we are having the engineering drawings for a storage facility there as I speak. And we lack 13 easements, getting all of the easements for our new water line. And these, we hired a company about two weeks ago that are just working on requiring the last 13 easements that we, we need to complete the easement process. Talking a little bit about what our safety concerns are on our water. We take six samples and send them to North Texas every month. And since when we had the boil notice, we increased that to eight. We take it, take samples from eight different locations on our water line and send them to North Texas and they analyze them. All, all of our water test came back good. We did not have any problem with the quality of water. We check our chlorine samples daily and we have to maintain a certain level of chlorine in our water system. And like I say, this is tested daily. And another update that we've, we've got started in it, in it is a new website that will have the ability to, if you subscribe to the website, it'll have the ability to tell you whenever there is an emergency situation that does arrive or anything like that. We have it, we have a, a meeting with a, with a new website company this coming Thursday. And like I say, we're advancing with our improvements and a lot of them had already been online if we hadn't had the pandemic or the Chinese virus. I have two board members here tonight, Steve Hatfield and Gary Lovell. And I appreciate y'all coming. And Steve, I'll turn it over to you now at this time. Oh, I have one other thing. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Jump in there.
Out of the 34 customers that North Texas Municipal Water District has, they have 34 that entities that they sell water to. We did not have but 14, we were, 14 sold more water than we did in this last billing cycle. And that's all, we sold more water, RCH pumped more water than the city of Kaufman and the city of Farmersville. And that just shows you how much water that we, we supply. Thank you.
Thank you, David. My name is Steve Hatfield. I live at 1081 South Highway 205. And it's a pleasure to be here to see y'all tonight. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to tell you what's going on at RCH. Jack has well laid out the plans that we had put together. And as he said, if it had not been for the fact that we were all affected by this COVID-19 virus, we would be way further ahead on our plans than what we are today. But I'd like to take just a moment. The information I'm about to give you is not an excuse in any way. But it's a fact that a lot of people have not heard and a fact that a lot of people do not understand. We, well, let me just give you a few figures here. RCH has 2,226 meters in use. From January 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2020, that six-month period, we pumped an amazing 142,400,000 gallons of water in that six-month period, which equates to approximately 791,000 gallons daily. That's over a six-month period from January to June 30th, going through what would be the coolest of our years, going into what would be the growing season for most of our yards and around here. But where it really changes, and if you will stop and think about when we started experiencing problems this year, from July 1st to August 30th, that two-month period, we pumped 125,100,000 gallons of water, which equates to 2,085,000 gallons of water per day. That's a jump from the first six months of the year pumping 791,000 gallons to those last two months pumping.
Let me make sure I'm understanding that right. So January 1st to June 30th was 142,000 and 791,000 per day.
Yes.
And July and August alone, alone.
Alone, those two months.
Was 125,000 and two day, roughly, roughly 2,000 or 2,000 gallons, right?
Yes, sir. 2,85,000. Well, 125,100,000, which equates to over 2 million gallons a day. That's approximately a 263% increase. And the issue becomes primarily irrigation water. And it's impossible. And it's impossible virtually for us to anticipate that type of an increase. Not an excuse, but it's just an issue. You might say, well, why could not, why couldn't we have larger lines, more storage, and such as that? But there is also a requirement by TCEQ that our water be moving, not be static. And as Jack mentioned, it has to maintain a certain chlorine level. And that's hard to do if you're not using all that water. You see, if we had, if we were designed to accommodate two million gallons a day, probably for nine months of the year, we'd be well below that, facing almost a different issue, the issue of having to drain lines, flush lines, and such as that. So all of that being said, it's not an excuse, it's just an issue that we have to deal with. And we're trying to deal with that now. Appreciate your patience. Hope you can understand some of the issues that we have. And I hope you understand that we're not just sitting over there drinking coffee and eating pie. We are really working hard and diligently to meet the needs of our customers. Thank you.
Steve, a quick question please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just say that some, and you know, just thinking about how this might be a terrible idea. What if we as a city had recommendations for people who are blasting, maybe whatever water these days, and then K three Z water? Would that be beneficial, would that be helpful?
Yes, sir, but it's all based upon people willingly going along with that. And it's hard to enforce such as that. And I, and yes, sir.
If you need recommendations?
And I think that, you know, in the future, we're going to have, Jack and I'll tell them about the engineer, have an engineer look at where we start declining in our water use.
Yes, sir.
We are working with our engineering firm right now to try to figure out, anticipate, even with what we have coming online, the point at which we will start experiencing issues within the system. And at that point, we would probably go into a time where the first half of the alphabet would water two days, have two days. The last half would have two days to water. And then the rest of the time, it would be allowed to fill the system up and bring it back up to level. So, yes, sir, Mayor Protim, we have thought about that. And definitely something we'd like to work closer with the city on. And, you know, in the future, let y'all know exactly what that, maybe give you a little bit of, where you can anticipate when we're going into those times when we have a problem.
That's not a drought contingency plan?
Yes.
Can you might also mention the ninety-one users that used?
Yeah, yeah. We, as I mentioned, we had two thousand two hundred twenty-six meters. That's not, but ninety-one customers out of that figure used almost twenty percent of the water that we pumped last month. Some of those, and those are things that we need to deal more aggressively with. You know, we...
I was saying those are all residents, those are all residential?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Residential and homeowners associations.
Mr. Protim, Mr. Hatfield, might there be a way that the city could help you with getting the word out a little quicker? A website is great, but that's only if someone's sitting on the website. But when something like this happens again, you can send the information in a more efficient manner?
Great, and we agree a hundred percent. And we're working on a website right now, but we're going to ask that our customers would send us their email and their mobile number, whereby we will be able to text and email and better communicate with our customers what's happening. I mean, that would be for having to work on the line. And also when we have to go into our drought restriction, which is going to...
Is there a way to, and I think the county have kind of helped us with this. Is there a way to get onto that emergency management text? Is there a way for us to just do, because I know there was a lot of confusion when that went out, of people in the city of Rockwall and the city of Heath were freaking out out there a lot to start that up?
Exactly. And I can answer that, that's a reverse nine-one-one system, I believe, that they have there. And I don't, as far as I know, that's run through the county emergency management department. And that goes to everyone within the county who weren't used to. So we may, at some point in time, that may be able to happen.
The website that we're looking at will be one that you subscribe to. Can you just punch your, punch your email and your information in? And then whenever something comes up, it will automatically be sent to you.
So when you guys get the website, at least let us know that we can share it on the city's website, that sort of thing.
Sure.
And are you going to add that thing to the bill somewhere?
We'll put that, again, as a matter of fact, a lot of the information that you shared with y'all in that meeting later, that's included in everybody's bill this month.
You got ours today, it was very, very solid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, for your answer. Jerry, did you have any? Thank you, Sheriff.
I think they pretty much got me, situated.
All right. So we don't have, do we have any other questions regarding RCH?
We say okay.
All right. All right. So we will move on to item seven point two. Presentation followed by discussion and consideration. Rockwall Central Appraisal District's resolutions to renovate and expand the Rockwall Central, Central Appraisal District appraisal office property situated at A School, One Justin Road, Rockwall Texas. This was requested by Kevin Passus.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Council, for the opportunity to be here tonight. Come to you on behalf of the Rockwall Central Appraisal District, requesting your approval of the resolution that's before you. The resolution that was passed by our Board of Directors was for a building, in addition to our building, not to exceed three point three five million dollars. And the Central Appraisal District Office has been at eight forty-one Justin Road since nineteen ninety-seven. In that time, it served the citizens of the county and also the appraisal district staff well. And in that time, the population of Rockwall County has increased from estimated thirty-six thousand five hundred to January one, twenty twenty estimate, which comes from the North Central Texas Council of Governments, of one hundred and six thousand three hundred and forty. Our parcel count has increased from an estimated twenty-two thousand two sixty-three to forty-eight thousand and two. And that number was as of July twenty-first of twenty twenty. And those numbers are based off January one parcel counts. When we rolled into our new year layer, which is starting appraisal for twenty twenty-one, that began around the beginning of August of this year, our parcel count grew by an estimated another two thousand parcels just because of planned subdivisions that we received, it started to split up the acreage. Most of the development in that county right now is on the eastern side, your fate and Roy City. But the county just continues to grow at a rapid pace. The twenty-three years that the building's been there, it's served, served the appraisal district well. Currently, we have twenty-one employees. We have five employees that are devoted to our collection department. And the other seventeen are devoted to, other sixteen, I'm sorry, devoted to our appraisal department. We are a dual nature office. Not every appraisal district in the state collects, but we do collect. We appraise by statutes, the tax code gives us our direction of laws that we have to follow to appraise. We implement those laws. And also the comptroller gives rules that we have to follow. And I'll say this, the comptroller, every year, is in our office measuring our appraisal standards and also our values. One thing we have to go through is a property value study. They take the values of our tax roll from the current year, they compare that to properties that have sold. And we have to be within a certain confidence interval to pass that test. And then also the methods and procedures review, the comptroller comes in to make sure we're following the tax code and the procedures that are set forth by comptroller's rules. So we are a dual nature office. We collect for all the entities in the county, the MUDs and the PIS and Municipal Utility Districts and the Public Improvement Districts. So it's a busy office. And once again, the duality of our office demands a larger space than most appraisal districts would. The property tax code authorizes the Board of Directors of the appraisal district, with the approval of the taxing units, to purchase, to lease, to renovate building as necessary to operate the appraisal district. The Board of Directors determine the most logical and physically responsible thing at this time to do would be to add on to our property. A search has been done for commercial buildings that would, that would fit the needs of the district now and moving forward in the future. And there's nothing out there at this time, after doing a search, that would fit our needs and also fit into this same dollar amount. The planned addition is a fifteen thousand one hundred square foot two-story. Expanded parking lots, updates to the current building. The additional space and redesign will enlarge and enhance the comfort in public areas. The parking area will triple with one-way flow of traffic in and out, accommodate all visitors, make access to the building safer. I don't know if you've been to our building during protest season. And we'll get into an actual layout of the facility here in just a minute. There's very limited parking. And we have multiple fender benders a year in the parking lot. I think we're very fortunate there hasn't been an issue with somebody actually being hurt up to this point. So in doing this, the parking space will increase, one way in, one way out, will enhance the safety. So I'll move into the presentation that we have here. On the screen is a rendition of the elevation of the new facility. What you see there in color is the new facility two-story. To the right of that is the current building. And so right now, our backs would be kind of towards the elementary school and TL Townsend. And so you're looking back at the building, you're looking back to the northwest right now. So that's the one rendering of the elevation. Of course, you know, the rendering of the elevation can change as we get to the, to the actual drawing and prints. The next slide is going to show the survey of the property. So looking at the survey to the right in green is the current facility. It's about sixty-one hundred feet, as I said, it's been there for twenty-three years. The parking we have right now is to the right and left, or the north and south of this building. And that's the only parking we have. Shaded parking to the east and west would be additional parking that we would add. And then to the south of the current facility would be the proposed addition. I know there's been some talk about us wanting to add a second floor to our building and a second floor costing this and that. That's not the case. We're actually going to add an addition to the building, a new second, two-story addition to the facility. And feel free to stop and ask any questions you have as you're going through this. The next slide, please. This shows the architectural rendering of the first floor. In this facility, the new first floor would be twelve office spaces. There's three appraisal review board, three conference rooms that would house our appraisal review board hearings. In the top right-hand corner, there's another conference room for future growth, for appraisal review board hearings. And then the second floor, you'll see there, I believe, there's three more conference rooms up there. The current facility we're in, we have one appraisal staff member, one appraiser is in a, it's where our safe is housed, it was a closet, a storage room for our file cabinets and things of that nature. We moved all that in the hallway and utilized that office space. One of our appraisal members is in the collections area up front, kind of an open-air department there. Three of our staff members are housed in what I believe is the old Cameron Building, the old county-owned building, which is at two seventy, I'm sorry, two oh five and Ridge Road, behind the seven eleven there. So we leased three office spaces there. When this building is complete, six of those offices will be full immediately. And it leaves us growth in the future on the first floor. So a lobby area when the property owners walk in, a reception area to take care of them as they come in. And then some restrooms there. The next slide is the proposed second floor. This second floor will remain vacant for now, except for it'll be heated and cooled so that we can move our storage documents, documents that have been retained and stored in a climate-controlled storage to this facility immediately, freeing up about seven thousand dollars a year that we pay in climate-controlled storage. And adding to that number is about twenty-three thousand we pay for the leased facilities, three offices that we leased. So thirty thousand dollars total, if this is approved and this building is built, there'll be savings there to the entities of the county. It'll be removed from the budget once we get, are able to move into this building. Once again, there's a conference room upstairs, kind of a more open design for the second floor. The envision here would be the appraisal staff would move there. There's a lot of contact and a lot of discussion through the appraisers as we go through the process every year. You know, what's your opinion of this, your opinion of that? And so there's a lot of, a lot of open discussions. So the open-air, open office space idea design on the second floor also allows us to have more staff in that, in that specific area. The next slide is going to show you, it's kind of a percent change of population in the county and the city of McLennan-Chisholm specifically over the last few years. And once again, these numbers come from the North Central Texas Council of Governments. So twenty-ten population estimate of McLennan-Chisholm, they showed thirteen hundred seventy-three. Twenty-twenty estimate, they show thirty-seven hundred and eighty, or eight point nine percent increase from twenty nineteen. Just the population of Rockwall County, if you project that out, comes to about a hundred and sixty thousand by twenty thirty-one. They estimate the build-out of Rockwall County at two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand population. We try to look forward to the future in this facility. If the projections move forward as they have in the past, then this facility will serve the county to build-out and beyond. So if the resolutions are passed and this building is built, once it's paid for, there won't be anything but just maintenance and operation moving forward of the facility. The next slide is going to show parcel count projection. And once again, we take the past parcel counts and project that forward using three point four percent, three point four seven percent from twenty twenty on, would show the need for seventeen appraisers. Right now, we have eleven. So if the projections move forward in twenty thirty, that first floor is full. And then we're going to look at moving forward to add additional offices in the second floor to facilitate the day-to-day operations of the appraisal district. The next slide just shows the allocation breakdown to each entity. And it shows the cost of this building to the city of McLennan-Chisholm would be roughly, worst-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is runoff financing, the full three point three five million. The first number we got, interest number we got was four point four nine, so we ran that. And it came to six hundred ninety-six or seven hundred dollars a year is the impact financially to the city of McLennan-Chisholm. The next slide will show, I believe the bullet point is in there, yes. The bullet point kind of shows the breakdown of the facility. It shows the two-story facility costing two point eight million or a hundred and eighty-five dollars a foot. The first floor FF and E, a hundred and seventeen thousand. The remodel of the existing building, we want to put a drive-through into the existing building where property owners can come through and drop off payments or drop off applications or exemption forms or whatever it might be, or pick up documents and not have to get out in inclement weather. Or if they're just not able to get out of the automobile, just to better serve them. And then also, we have to retrofit the current facility with the fire suppression system. So a hundred fifty-nine thousand there, and then architect and engineering fees. And the total cost of all these come to three point three five. There's an estimated nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars in reserve funds and money from this year's budget that will be put towards this building, which would reduce the estimated finance amount to roughly two point five million. I'll say that the number of three point three five was the high estimate from a design and development package. We do not have a full set of blueprints yet because there's no point in moving forward and spending the money that it's going to take to get those prints drawn and engineered when we don't know if we're going to be able to build a building yet. If we get the passing resolutions to do this, then we'll move forward with that. So the design and development package was an estimated three point three five on the high side. So two point five will finance. We do have a rate on the table now, three point five fixed for twenty years on this commercial building. So it brings a payment down to one seventy-seven. Your allocation percentage brings your payment down to four hundred and seventy-eight dollars a year allocated towards this building. Once again, the resolution is for three point three five million. And we're requesting your support in this matter. And with that, I will take any questions that you have.
How does the focus impact your ability to do your protests?
Our protests?
How probably working that? How does it work?
So we facilitate two ARV panels. If we don't run two ARV panels every year, it'll be impossible for us to certify our role to our entities by July twenty-fifth. So we have a small office up in the front of the building that we had used. So when COVID hit and we knew there was an issue there with the pandemic, began to look at how we were going to run two ARV hearings. So what we did was we put a half-wall in our lobby. And we converted our lobby into an ARV hearing room for social distancing purposes. You would think with COVID that people would utilize phone hearings more than what they had in the past. Ironically, the numbers, twenty eighteen was the first year for phone hearings. The twenty seventeen legislature implemented that. We had a hundred and seventeen phone hearings the first year. In twenty nineteen, we had a hundred and thirty-eight. And we only hit two hundred and one this year. People like to come in face-to-face and protest their property better. And that's their right, that's their right. And I don't blame them, I think I would be the... I think I would be, be the same way. So COVID did affect us. It affected the operations. Our office doors were closed for about two weeks just because of some COVID scares within the building. But as far as affecting the operations, we were still able to certify that role in a timely manner.
So there's, is there any ability for your employees to work virtually?
That, that's, yes, there is. A VPN connection with the amount of data that we transfer back and forth and the sensitive nature of the data that we transfer back and forth. There's confidential information when people fill out home sit applications or social security numbers, driver's license numbers. So, you know, if they're going to work from home, there's going to have to be secure VPN connections set up at their home. Is the Wi-Fi going to be able to do that? I mean, those are all questions that thankfully we didn't have to answer because we didn't have to, we didn't have to go virtual like that. But yes, it can be possible. I do know with the off-site facility that there's so much data that is pulled when appraisal, when an appraiser pulls up or calls up a property ID number, there's so much stuff that comes out of our appraisal software that the VPN connection is very slow and it drops out and they, they lose it sometimes and have to go back in and call IT and get things fixed. So there's challenges there. Will that, you know, could that be better in the future? I don't know. We're working with an IT company. It's very highly recommended and they're, they definitely have, have had their challenges this year with the VPN, so.
And you said you have file cabinets in halls?
We do.
And you rent the facility out, you rent the number two facility. Is that state requirement to keep all that documentation?
Yes.
Or are there copies or is there a way to put that up?
Good question. So when I was appointed in 2018, I saw the need for record retention digitally. So probably end of first quarter 2019, we did start scanning and retaining documents digitally. So all the stuff that has to be retained, we're, we're moving that forward and moving that over. And as we move forward, we're also retaining that digitally. It's, it's caused an increase in our server, the cost of the servers and things of that nature, but we have gone that direction in the last couple of years.
And one more question? And this is, I'm just trying to understand this. You get your funding for the building, so 50% comes from the school district and then the various, various cities and county and?
Correct.
The muds all pay in.
Yes, ma'am.
So would it be feasible to say that a person that lives in the mud has to pay for that at the mud, at the city, at the county and at the school district level?
If they're paying taxes to all of those entities and yes, they're contributing in those ways, that's correct.
Yes.
And we're funded by the entities, which in turn is funded by the citizens of the taxpayers. The, the school gets the lion's share because they have the lion's share of the levy. The way the property code, the property tax code sets it up to fund our budget, you fund it by a levy percentage. So our operations budget, we take the entity's tax levy for the year, we divide it back by the total levy and that gives us that percentage. And because Rockwall ISD has a lion's share, then they, they get the lion's share of, of the budget and everything else that we, that we have to do.
And this is also by state law?
It's all property tax code, yes, ma'am. The property tax code gives them. I, I said this, I say this in meetings and I get laughed at, but we're simply implementers of the law. The law says do this and that's what we do. We do our best to follow the property tax code to a T. And the reason it's like that is so it's fair and equitable for, you know, for our property owners. So we, we do our best to, to follow the letter of the law.
But you don't, the different regional districts don't get funding from the state for?
No, ma'am. We are not state-funded. The way it's set up, it's completely funded by the entities of the, of the county that they appraise in.
And when did you last look at available merchant properties?
Hmm, a few weeks ago, maybe three at the most.
Can you comment? I know you already kind of been in front of some other entities.
Yes, sir.
And I know that the school district last night did not.
Correct.
Can you show me why they didn't refer to it?
Sure. They said, they said timing and House Bill 3. So the legislature in 2019, they kind of restructured school funding. The state said, we're going to kick in more funds. Schools, you're going to get to reduce your rates, they're saving the taxpayers money. The COVID effect, oil and gas in, in Texas, you know, the oil industry shut down when, you know, oil sold for a negative amount and gas was, you know, dropping there very rapidly during the COVID effect. So they said, they just don't know what the legislature is going to do with House Bill 3 in 2021. Nobody knows what's going to happen, you know, past, past what's happening right now. But their, their reason was timing and House Bill 3, there's no way it happens by me.
That's kind of like, that's my concern as well, is not so much the need. I think the need is pretty obvious. I think the timing of it concerns me as well.
Sure. And, and on that, I mean, we, we tried two years ago and, you know, different set of dynamics there, but it was shut down again. I'll say this, that as we move forward, the need for more staff is there. The need for more staff is going to cause the need for more office spaces. The need for more office spaces is going to cause the lease prices to go up. And that's money that's never going to be recovered by the entities. If for some reason there was a constitutional amendment that abolished appraisal districts, that property is sold and the entity gets all their money back. You know, in the next 10 years, the need for the appraisal staff, if the county continues to grow, is not going to change. So we're just going to be adding offices. You know, there's six offices we're looking at adding over the next 10 years. So those lease, those lease spaces cost money. And so that's, that's just going to continue to increase. It's not going to increase as much at one time as this is, but there's still going to be office spaces, it's going to have to be rented and to facilitate the district because there's going to be no way for the staff that we have now to appraise, you know, 60,000 parcels, 70,000 parcels in 10 years from now. So, I mean, yes, it's not going to be a one, you know, a hit right now and, and moving forward, but it's, it's still going to happen at some point, but there's going to be additional costs to house the staff that we're going to need.
So at this point, I have this kind of motion from the local law here. Ask for motion to approve the resolution to renovate and expand our cap appraisal office property situated on 841 Justin Road, Rockwall, Texas. All those opposed to this resolution? There's no motion. There's no motion. Are those done, or motion?
You don't, you don't need one, as a matter of fact, you don't need one because it's, it sits there unless the council votes to approve it. So without a vote to approve it, it's still sitting there. That's what doesn't happen. So you don't technically need a motion to do that.
Okay.
So without, you know, going forward and you just say thank you, move on to the next item.
Yes, disrespectfully, I would like to maybe have a conversation in the future, you know, what, what would it take to see a resolution pass? It's, it's a need that we have. And once again, I appreciate you guys and we're honored to work for y'all in the capacity of the appraisal district of Rockwall County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. So item number three, 7.3, consider approval of the local Davis bacon wage rates for use on the upcoming fire station project. This, I'm, the gentleman's requested by Ryan Bosker.
Good evening, Mayor Proten, council members and staff. Thank you all for having us tonight. As we've discussed, a big part of our, much, much like the gentleman that spoke before us, you know, following the laws and making sure that everything is in strict accordance with our understanding of the law, a big part of that is Texas government code that governs all of your public construction projects. So making sure that we're following all those government code requirements. And one of those, section 2258 of the Texas government code suggests that the public entity should adopt prevailing wage rates to include under construction projects. So with that in mind, what we're, the city has the option of doing two things. Either A, basically performing your own wage rate survey around the immediate area, which is an extremely costly endeavor and it drags out a very long time. Or you can use the locally adopted Davis bacon wage rates that are already established and somebody else has already done the work for you on that. That is what most entities will do. The only time we really see a divergence in that is usually when we're somewhere that's really oil-heavy where, you know, the local wage rates are driven crazy high by welders or things like that that may not apply in a rural area. So with that in mind, we've discussed with Speed Fab Creek, who you already have on board, they're in agreement with adopting the Davis bacon wage rates and incorporating into their contract. And so with that, we would like to ask that the city council consider approval of adoption of those Davis bacon wage rates. And just to give you a little background, the idea behind the Davis bacon wage rates is really to protect the workers, to protect the folks working on your projects, and also to ensure that you're getting quality workmanship. This basically prevents somebody from hiring, you know, somebody for $3 an hour to come dig a trench. It ensures that you have, you know, quality workmanship and well-paid workers.
So the layover motion to approve the local Davis bacon wage rates for use on the upcoming fire station project. Any question?
Brian, will we have to renegotiate this in January?
Uh, no, ma'am.
And, but when I was reading it, I didn't understand, what does fringes, fringes mean?
So the, I believe the fringes are the things that are incorporated in the wages like healthcare and vacation, those kind of things that are incorporated into that wage rate.
Do you have a question? True. If there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I propose to ask for, to approve the local Davis wage rate, Davis bacon wage rate for use on the fire project. Item 7.4, consider ranking geotech materials testing firms and authorize city administrator to negotiate a contract with the top-ranked firm in accordance with approved fire station budget. Ryan, is this? Open your eyes.
Yes, sir. Okay, so also along the same lines of the Texas government code, as a public entity, you're required to have a, basically a third-party material testing firm which provides exactly that material testing of the components that are going into your building. Those things are like concrete cylinder tests to make sure the concrete meets the proper PSI, is the proper mixes, you know, checking things like steel that's going out, making sure that the bolt pattern or the, the turner nut, the bolts are bolted in correctly. Just very high-level material testing, prism, grouts, grout prisms for CMU, those sort of things, compaction testing of the soil to make sure that the soil is properly compacted, you know, before you start putting anything on top of it. So with that in mind, we're also in need of a geotech for the site across the road. What a geotech is, that's where they come in and take borings to determine what's under the ground. And those borings will help determine how the foundation is constructed on the building. So both of those items are a professional service under the Texas government code. And so through the Texas government code, you're required to present those as a, as a professional service, that being based on qualifications versus based on price. So with that in mind, the city did issue an RFQ for geotech and material testing services. We received those. I've got Sean Spires here with us tonight with AGCM who assisted going through all of those responses to the RFQ. Sean, how many responses were there?
Seven.
There were seven responses. So you had really good response, all very good quality professional firms. And Sean has gone through and assisted in ranking those and is glad to answer any questions. But what we're asking tonight is that you approve the ranking as presented in your packet with Alpha being the number one. Should the negotiations fall through with the number one selected most qualified, then negotiations will cease and we'll move on to the number two highest ranked.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
For number one rankings, Alpha, very limited availability. Out of a score of 4.2 that they have received or under received 15, elaborate.
Sure. Yeah. I believe that was based on location of office and how quickly they could dispatch to the site in need of emergency or something happened.
Yes, they were basically on our, on our scoring matrix, we had miles away from availability from the site. Had 0.15, 15 to 30, 35 to 4, or 35 and up. And they were at 25 miles away. So that's why they received five. That was the, a lot of points of scoring for that.
And maybe a word to the board?
Yes.
How important is the Davis geographic proximity for that, to what we need to have available?
It's not as important as some of the resources that they are able to provide, but it's just availability of like if we have a concrete pool or if they need to sense to be able to do a quick inspection. But in our, what we usually request is a 48-hour notice to them for any inspections or testing they need to do. So they have plenty of time to make sure that they have the availability and staff there and resources.
So I will ask for motion to approve the ranking as presented for the geotech materials and testing firms as listed.
And may I also add, and approve the city manager to move forward negotiating that, negotiating and executing that contract in accordance with the pre-approved budget.
And approval of the city administrator to move forward negotiations on that contract. Any question? One more question. Second, or second?
How's second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose to ask for approval for the, to approve the ranking as presented and to authorize the city administrator to negotiate a contract with any top-ranked firm. Ryan, item 7.5, would you as well, fire station design update and delayed matters?
Yes, sir. So just wanted to kind of have this as a standing item in case you had any questions about where we were in the design process. Didn't want to, you know, at the last meeting, we brought you where we were at the time with the floor plan as it was, you know, conceptual at the time in Speed Fab's concrete. Since then, we've had a meeting with Speed Fab to talk about some things that kind of we wanted to see tweaked a little bit. So I believe you have a floor plan, maybe there in your packet. Do you all have a floor plan? And I can pull it up here or I can send it to you if you want to pull it up in the screen.
I can pull that up.
Okay, great.
I'll show that.
No problem. We've got some really cool, really great tweaks that, and Ron Ham is, Ron Ham is here with Speed Fab Creek. He's glad to answer any specific questions about the design.
I have a question.
Yes.
Something has been told or has been said about how many beds there will be. Can you elaborate on how many beds each room will have in it?
Yes, there's one bed per dormitory.
So not 21, not 27?
Just one, one per dormitory. And, and just to, I'll just add on to that, that's a kind of a, that's kind of a mission for, for us. We, we think that that's super important and I know Speed Fab Creek, the chief, would agree, but when folks come back from a distressing call, they need, they need somewhere to go by themselves where they're not surrounded by everybody, just to go and decompress. So it's really important that they have their own small space that they can go and, and, you know, digest and do what they need to do.
I just think that there's some misinformation out there, but I just want to make sure we clear that for us.
So, and so the biggest changes that you'll see on this floor plan from, from what you saw last time around, and, and hats off again, if you have any questions for Ron, glad to answer them. But hats off to, to your team for coming up with some very creative solutions to some of the questions we had. But if you remember on the last floor plan, the, the men's showers are basically what we call the game restroom. So because we wanted to focus on making sure that the station could be better suited for the future in terms of, of housing males and females. in terms of, of housing males and females, that game restroom concept was eliminated in favor of individual restrooms and showers. So, and that's, that's, comes at no increase to the city. Speed Fab just did. It just took care of it. So much, much better layout and you gained a shower. So you actually have one extra shower beyond what you had last time. So that's pretty, that's pretty amazing. The same footprint, footprint hasn't grown at all. So that's the biggest change, I believe, out of this, out of this floor plan. Some other minor tweaks over to the bunker gear room, the storage rooms, where again, for future growth, we wanted to make sure that bunker gear storage was, was a little bit, a little bit larger to accommodate growth. We moved around some things like the ice machine to make sure that the ice was not out in the bay where it could get contaminated by particulate from the trucks. So again, in line with protecting the first responders and making sure that they're healthy. We're watching out for them.
So Ryan, just as far as, for the sake of leading minutes and documentation and that sort of thing. So at this point, I'm seeing eight beds, correct?
Future. Eight possible.
Tendinitive.
Eight possible. Correct, correct. Eventually, you could grow into eight. So again, with future growth in mind, there's eight possible spots.
And then four separate bathrooms, slash showers, correct?
Let's see, one, two, three. You've got three that are situated on the main corridor. Then you've got one that's over by the storm shelter area, which is required by code.
Right. I mean, any other, any other specifics that would be worth to share as well?
Those are really the biggest changes. And as I mentioned last time, this will continue to evolve and tweak as we go forward. And, you know, we may find little things here and there, so it'll continue to change. But we'll continue to give you updates so that you know kind of what's happening. Nobody's caught off guard when we get to the end and start putting shit on the ground.
When do you expect us to have the final design?
So, so next, next meeting, I was actually going to bring you all an updated schedule and budget, kind of to show you where we are on that. I wanted to wait till we get the geotech done because I think we're concerned about what they're going to find underground. And so once we get the geotech in, I think we can, we can hone in on that schedule a little bit, give you a better update the next week.
We'll find a basic schedule in ten hours.
So this is still a work in progress, which I think is important for everybody to understand.
And I will tell you, you did approve a, a kind of a straw man schedule early on. The schedule that they're proposing currently far beats that straw man schedule. Far beats it. So again, it's looking very good on paper, but I want to be cautious and get that geotech and make sure that before we present that that we're...
One's definitely.
That's right, that's right. But everything's going very well. Great, we've got a great team, so we're very happy.
And Ryan, there's another bedroom that's very fun, but it's not a shower, it's just a restroom.
Correct, just a public restroom. Yes, and that's for, for public use. No shower. And you also had a decontamination shower out in the bay, but no restroom, just a shower. So I guess it's a piece of...
Other questions at this point?
What page is this in the packet?
It's not in the packet.
So Ryan, do you have any other questions? I think we're good with out of 7.5.
Again, no action needed on this tonight. This is just an update. We'll have these standing every couple of weeks just to...
Obviously, none of this information is in the packet.
We really won't have any action beyond tonight for quite a while until we get the final design ready to present to you. That will probably be the next action item related to construction.
None of this information is in the packet, so big surprise.
Discussion and action are our consideration. When in a role agreement for fire protection services between Rockville County and the City of McLennan Chisholm and Chief Simmons, I'll let you put it before Ryan's question.
City Council, you have the documents. We have the data, there is the same number of people represented as last year. As you remember, last year they did increase from 67.5 to 77.5, we currently have this year. I went to the contract, there's been no changes to the internal agreement this year at this time.
So we have a...
Anything?
Right. We have a motion to approve the internal agreement for fire protection services between Rockville County and the City of McLennan Chisholm.
I'll make a motion to approve the internal agreement between Rockville County and the City of McLennan Chisholm for fire protection services.
You have a second?
All second.
So any discussion at all?
Yeah, I have some questions. So Chief, you got this. Was there any talks about increasing subsidy from 77.5 to go higher for, for more volume?
No, sure not at this time. Any questions? So all those in favor of approving the internal agreement for fire protection services between Rockville County and the City of McLennan Chisholm? You say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those not, not in favor, you say nay. Out of number 7.7, we will open up a, open up for a public hearing to receive comments regarding the setting of the tax rate to 0.15 per $100 valuation on all taxable property for the fiscal year starting October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021.
Valerie Bodart, 402 Cattle Bear and Drive. I saw a facility for lawn storage on the floor plan for the, for the new fire department. And I'd like to suggest taking the funds earmarked on the budget for a code enforcement officer in a truck and moving that money to a property maintenance fund. Chief Simmons is qualified as a code enforcement officer and he has been filling that need. I see no need at this time to expand our staffing when these funds can be used to invest in the equipment necessary for the upkeep of our growing outdoor city property. Thanks.
You have comments at this time?
Good evening. Thank you again. I, I think that's a very wise thing that Mrs. Bodart is proposing. The number of, how many code enforcement calls does the City of McLennan Chisholm get? And yet, in this budget, we have a code enforcement officer, another staff individual, and, with a vehicle. And remember, I thought it was interesting that the code enforcement officer was supposed to mow the grass too, which, which you guys wisely said, let's take that out. Chief Simmons has, has said that he plans for the fire department to mow the grass at, at City Hall when the fire station is built. There's no reason they can't do that now if they had the equipment. So it makes sense, it, it makes no sense to have a code enforcement officer there, especially with the number of calls that we have. When I was mayor, we had a code enforcement issue where an individual had too many horses on their property and we won that case in, in, in a, in court. And that same property owner is still violating the, the code and is, again, the city is, is, is dealing with that issue. It's a code enforcement issue, it's the same one. But you're not getting a, a bunch of code enforcement issues. You've basically created a solution where there is no problem. If you like big government, if you like bureaucracy, man, this is the way to go, no question. But if you like limited government, if you think to use efficiency is the, is the top priority, well then, this code enforcement position is, is ridiculous. Spoke with Chief Simmons and he even said that he could, he could have men on the fire department, one per shift, get trained as code enforcement officers as well, if there's that kind of need, which again, I argue that there's not. There are so many other better ways to, to skin that cat than to create this new position. So you have the opportunity right now to, to, to move that money over, buy some good lawn mowing equipment that the fire, the firemen can, can mow the, the grass here, save the citizens money, work for the people, not have the people, us taxpayers, work for you. Thank you very much.
So Ryan, if you have any other, for this to go up here and take comments on the tax rate? Anyone else? If we have no other comments on the public hearing, the time is now for the fourth. Public hearing closed. Ryan, moving on to 7.8, discussion and action regarding ordinance approving and adopting a budget for fiscal year starting October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget for fiscal year starting October 2020 and ending September 30, 2021.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second? A second. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Um, I, I personally don't think it's a good idea to use firemen to look at grass. I'd rather have them on my professional development. And that's, I still think the code enforcement officer, based on conversations we've had with Chief Simmons and with members of the community that have code issues that we seem to deal with on a weekly basis, I believe the part-time code enforcement officer is a good use of our taxpayer dollars.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Drew? So there's one aye?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges, Mr. Dahl, aye. Show that unanimous. Right, moving on to 7.9, discussion and action considering ordinance setting a tax rate of 0.150000 per $100 valuation on all taxable property for the fiscal year starting October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021. I'll entertain a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the ordinance setting the tax rate of 0.150000 for $100 valuation on all taxable properties for FY, for the fiscal year starting on October 2020 and ending September 30, 2021.
I've got a motion and I have a second. All second? Yes, ma'am.
Have you, you wrote that? Okay.
Sure.
There's first specific one. Thank you. I'm sorry, I moralized that when I was saying what I was saying. I moved that the property tax rate... For 7.9?
Yes.
Okay. I moved that the property tax rate increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 0.150000 for $100 valuation, which is effectively a 2.9 increase, 2.9% increase in the tax rate.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? All second. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do we need to do a roll call vote on that as well? Mr. Drew? Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Ms. Kibbit? Show that unanimous. All right, 7.10, discussion and action considering an ordinance ratifying the corporate tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget. I'll entertain a motion on that. I believe I would need to be around the same with that person.
Mr. Mayor, I do approve the ordinance ratifying corporate tax increase reflected in the FY 2020 to FY 2021 budget.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's no discussion. We'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Ms. Kibbit?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Moving on to 7.11, discussion and action regarding consideration of a resolution declaring the city has performed the required annual review of the investment policy and is not recommending any changes at this time. I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution? So I make a motion. All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Show that unanimous. Moving on to 7.12.
Mayor, I actually have a request that we pull this item if you don't mind.
7.12?
I have recommended a, that we all talk a little bit that I really do a little bit of work on it. I was talking to the accountant today and considering the fire station funds and the fire department budget for all of those funds that Techstock provided us. I was taking the roll call and roll calls with the fire capital. But since we don't know the timing, the fire station condition, I think it is a good feature. I think it just came over at the time and kind of worked out some of the language of that. We should fill the emergency, so I'm just going to request that we pull it at this time.
You're the one that requested it, so we'll pull it at this time. 7.13, discussion and action regarding authorizing the city administrator to open an additional checking account, Alliance Bank for transaction related to fire station account and related expenses. I'll entertain a motion on that?
I'd like a motion to authorize the city administrator to open an additional checking account, Alliance Bank for transaction related to the fire station capital and related expenses.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
All second.
Got a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Show that unanimous. Moving on to 7.14, discussion and action providing for authorized signatures to the city's financial accounts with Alliance Bank, Tech School, Logic, and Wilmington Trust. I'll entertain a motion on that?
Mayor, I'd like a motion to approve authorized signatures to the city's financial accounts with Alliance Bank, Tech School, Logic, and Wilmington Trust.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
All second of motion.
All right, any discussion?
Mayor, just for clarification, this just, we did strike former Councilwoman Boone as a secretary and we added City Secretary Gray and the understate's.
All right. All right, any discussion at this council? If not, all in favor? Aye.
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 Show that unanimous. 7.15, discussion and action, or excuse me, discussion regarding outdoor weather warnings sirens, including possible locations, costs, and related net. Chief Simmons, would you like to...
Absolutely, Chief. I know many months ago, there was, there was some conversation with the council members and some citizens in regards to outdoor warning sirens. We'd started gathering some information, you know, of course, my first thought is they're just so expensive. I was just proving myself wrong. So I started looking into it a little bit and had conversation back with, with one of the big companies that managed for, that installed these outdoor warning sirens throughout the metro area. He was actually able to come in town a couple of weeks ago now that the pandemic has slowed down or trying to get somewhat normal again. And we ever had a good conversation, you know, let's, let's look at it. What would it take for the city to go ahead and put in some outdoor warning sirens? And how much coverage will we get with one, one tower? And how much coverage will we get with two towers? And so in the packet, you'll see a map there that shows two towers. Tower one would be at the, what I call the city hall of the fire station on the property. And then tower two would be in the, so normally, kind of the Edward's League area would be tower two. And all that map, looking at the city limits, without actually scaling out, we were covering with those two sirens, we would cover 88.5% of the city. And please understand, these are for, these are designed for individuals that are in home, you know, all the time. you know, all the time or in high, to design for outdoor use, outdoor person. But you can see the coverage of the map there that you have. It starts out with a, the hundred decibels or more, and you can see how that circle kind of grows out to where our seventy to eighty decibels is what pretty much encompasses the whole city. Two towers, uh, one tower, if we were to install just one tower, you see in your packet there, it runs about forty-four thousand. You'll notice that costs a little higher than if you put two. And the reason why is the software, the install, the, the equipment that comes with it to at least have one tower, we can have that. American Signal provides this software, and I, I do not know this thing, this system very well, but having a conversation with them and most recently the city of Orange City has installed, so I've been able to talk to the city of Orange City and find out how well the system works. And the software that they provide, where this system can be activated anywhere that you have a computer access, you have iPhone access, you have iPad access, anything, any type of tablet, this system can be activated. It can also be activated from a manual push button that we would, if the city was decided to build this, we would have it located in the dispatcher room or what they call the watchroom at, at the station. So then you can have numerous people on it, you know, the mayor that has access to it, leasing them access to it, the mayor, whatever, everybody on council that has access to it. Don't recommend it, but if you did, you can have numerous individuals that have an account to be able to go in there and make sure that in a situation where we're notified to activate the group, you'll be able to do it. Two sirens to cover the city right now, would run the city approximately, let's see, around, approximately seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand dollars to have two complete mile and a half covered sirens installed in these two little pictures. And, and the, the thought behind it was to kind of, I know we've had some citizens have concerns with it in other cities around the city, we have to start somewhere. And so if we were able to, to get to these systems in and then as the city develops and grows throughout, then we can look at where our next siren could be and then work with those developers on, you know, having them partner with the city to be able to solve. And part of this initial plan was, was having some brief conversation, very brief, just kind of to, to plant the seed a little bit with Sonoma Verde is, hey, we're looking at this as we present this to council, council decides, we want to come back and have a conversation and see if you as a developer would want to partner with the city and maybe install them inside us. If, sorry, if council chooses to look more into this, you will, Brad Swanson, who I've been speaking with, will be more happy to fly in from Chicago. The next council meeting, if council wanted to do this a little bit further and have someone come in and actually can speak very well of this system outside of me, me coming in and, you know, we can actually get from there.
Basically seeing if there's council interest in pursuing further discussions with, with the implementation of this project.
Prices were a whole lot less than what I had expected and were some numbers that I've received from other cities for many years past.
Wasn't there like a survey on some websites that, do you, like, can you really find it?
I, I do not, I do not, I don't.
Can we, can we look into that and just kind of go from there? Is that what people are asking for?
Sure.
Or I think we should start.
Absolutely. This, this is just to bring it before council until we have a starting point for you to, to give direction, to say continue to move forward and look into it. And again, you know, it's been many months, but we've received a few phone calls from citizens that called me up here, were asking questions, hey, why aren't we looking at this? And so it started the, the process.
Well, I, I know even before I came to office, there was, I think you had a public safety commission of some sort, and that was something that they had looked at.
Correct.
Because I had, citizens come to me during one of my office hours with a, you know, with a plan talking about, but it was something that they were looking, that, that, that his neighbor, the campervan was, was interested in personal.
This discussion started back in.
It's been going on for around three years.
It's been something that's talked about and so now we feel like, we feel like it's time to, to go and have some more in-depth conversation about it and see if it's something council is interested in and we can start.
I would like to suggest we try to find that information from those that were.
Oh, I do have it.
I have it. That's what I would suggest, is to get that information, maybe look at, you know, what has been already said, go from there. I think it's something that we want, that we can just, you know, on my, we start there.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. What happened to something?
She, did they, I think without information, you did, go in and tell about the cost of the, the maintenance fee for these systems?
You know, and that's, we did go into the depth of what the cost was, but it's minimal cost. So in order to maintain this system once a month, that would be on the city. So we're likely, if this council chooses to do some of it, I would be responsible for once a month testing the sirens. And there's warranties and that, and it's not in detail, and that's why I will bring Brad in at the next meeting, if I feel a little more depth of the annual maintenance of each towers or these systems and then whatever the specific portion I have on.
Yeah, I would like to say long process, absolutely.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll, before we move on to seven sixteen, it's been requested to take a, a minute. It is seven fifty-nine.
Okay, well, the city council is taking a break and from the, from the events that we just, we just watched, I, there's a lot, a lot here that, that I think is, is important to talk about and obviously, they're probably going to take a executive session, which probably be a few hours as well. They're prone to do that. One of the, one of the, one of the more interesting things is that the city council doesn't think that firefighters, or Lorna Kippit doesn't think that firefighters should be mowing the grass, but I guess she doesn't realize that in most cities, the fire departments do that when they're, when they're part of, when they're connected to the city hall. This is a very common thing. Firefighters are spending most, she, she wants them to be working on, on their, on their skills. Well, if, if, if you've ever been around a fire department, it's very easy to understand that there is a lot of downtime and firefighters are looking for things to do. They work one day on, two days off. This is a fire department that sees an average of one call per day and Ms. Kippit thinks that they need to be working on their skills. That's just, uh, this is, this is the big government mindset of this city council and the mayor. They don't care about keeping government small, they want to grow, grow, grow. And so they approved the budget, they kept this, 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 this position in. The biggest way to, the fastest way to grow government is adding more staff and that is exactly what they do because they clearly care about growing their government. What I found interesting as well is on this, on the, on the siren, on the, the tornado siren, which is something that was on the city survey that you cannot find anymore on the city website, the, thanks to Lorna Kippit and Mayor Keith Short. Those surveys have been erased from the website, you can't find them, but those web, but those surveys were asking citizens what they thought about things. And one of the questions asked was, what about tornado sirens? Would you like to see the city of McLennan Chisholm install tornado sirens? Overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, citizens said yes. And that was, that was something that was in the survey that they, that Trudy Westner tonight said, well, wasn't there some kind of question, question being asked? Of course, they never want to talk about surveys, the, the surveys that, that I did or that Adrian Balkman and Scott Turnbull, when they were on this council, they don't want to talk about those things because again, it gives credibility to conservatives. And the, if, if you're going to grow government, if you're going to get big, if you're going to expand this, this size of, of the city, you've got to ignore anything that gets in your way. I think what's one of the most fascinating things, and I'm going to be doing a show on RCH Water, because I actually had, when the chairman and board members who came, we, I, I actually followed them out and sat and talked with them and they were very open and very forthcoming with information that I think is a game changer. It is, and, and so I'm going to do a show on this because what you, what you want to know is number one, there is a way to change, if, if you don't like the way the board is established, is, is structured, there's a way to change it. I didn't think that there was. And I've got the secret for you. So I'm, I'm gonna, that's the teaser for this, for that show. But if we want to improve the board of RCH, we can do that. And I'll, and I'll show you how and we can, we can make a big difference there. So after talking with, with, with them, I'm, I'm very encouraged about that. So that is, those are some of the things that, that I took away. I don't, I don't know where, I don't know, Val Bodart is here tonight, she is, of course, Mayor Short was here, he just got, got here and of course, the, the biggest absent mayor that the city has ever had, very rarely here at the beginning of meetings and, and most of the meeting was, was without him. So big surprise there. He's running for reelection, obviously, and you have someone like Val Bodart who can dedicate all of her time to being mayor and wants to bring transparency to government, but, but that's not happening right now and unfortunately, we have a very, we're about to hear about the economic development committee, which, which is a contradiction in terms when it comes to, when it comes to our city. I doubt very seriously that this, this is, is going to actually net anything that is going to be of real benefit. I think that they're going to, most of them are going to move forward the way they have always done and are going to continue to try and undermine the limited government, small government mindset of the city. Of course, there are some good people on the, on the committee, Jim Heron, Paul Day, these, even though Paul's a Californian, which I gave him grief about, I encouraged him to remember that the reason you moved to Texas is because we're not California. And so Jim Heron, hopefully, he is the, well, he is the chair and, of that committee. Hopefully, he will keep an open mind about the fact that we don't have to be, we don't have to fall in line and be a cookie cutter to every, every other, what every other city does. We can be unique and we should be unique. We should be focusing on, on online businesses as the source of our revenue, the bricks and sticks that are going to create blight in our community because as, as the, as the trends are going today, there's very few, I mean, more and more businesses are going out of business and because more and more people are going to Amazon and are, and are shopping online, even Target, our local Target, there's a lot of online purchases from, from, from that business, even though we have a, a brick and mortar store right here in our city. So that is, I think, an important thing to point out. And so these are, these are the things that we're trying to, trying to hone in on. And one of the, what I found interesting as well is the AGCM representative didn't have anything for the packet and so everything that, that he presented was on the screen, but not part of the packet. And that, that is the, that is a, a key rub that I have with having this, this crew in here. And of course, we have a complaint to the attorney general's office about this and about the whole, how, how everything went down. I guess we'll see how that pans out. I'm, I'm not, I'm kind of skeptical about frankly, the way government works today, especially when it comes to upholding, upholding the rule of law because it doesn't seem to, to really matter too much. Okay, it looks like Trudy Westner is coming back in. We're going to take it, send it back to the city council.
Bill Seven is making a move back in session. The next one is seven one six, update by council member Dahl regarding activities of first economic development committee meeting and consideration of a request from the committee for direction in council regarding committee priorities and activities. Mr. Dahl?
Yeah, this is Mayor and Council. So we had our first meeting on fourteen. Got a group of people in here and one of the things that they expressed, I don't know if you'll be careful with, they nominated Mr. Jim Heron, Chair of Committee, and they nominated Mr. Paul Day as Vice Chair for the Committee. The committee, when we, when we passed the resolution, started, we, we tasked that resolution, so, like, so they could add items. Um, being to help out with the, um, the, um, the commercial development standards as well, and we also asked them to help out, they're developing a economic development plan, but also help work on our comprehensive plan. They got some pretty good items to chew on and one of the things that they're looking for from us was a direction to go, to get their feet wet. They just want some guidance on where they could go as far as the first big items that they actually started packing for, so that's what they asked me to put in there. Their next meeting, they have to hope they're there to help them out with some questions. They didn't want to get some, they want to get some infrastructure information and also they want to get some water information from RCH. I think what RCH delivered us today is going to give them some good value as far as what any model needs to be for any commercial development in the city. But mainly what they're looking for is a guide, they're looking for guidance on what the big ticket item should be, that they should pack first before they start building up, the suburbs that we slated in the part.
So what do you think with the most important economic development plan?
Well, economic development plan is going to encompass a lot of items, so by then tacking in some of the other items, it's actually.
Be that.
Since we've already slated to try and tackle a comprehensive plan, I think that there are times we have suited towards, for driving toward that with first meeting. We do need, we do desperately need our zoning change for our future development of zoning to be, to be looked at, since the majority are pushing commercial development, so it probably has got to be completely consumed by its whole life and its expansion. So that is more time, time sensitive issue when it comes to economic development, but I think the comprehensive plan and getting started with that would probably be the, one of the betterest of the time. I'm just a messager. So what do you guys like in order to act in that, if there's what I would be for?
Gosh, it seems like we're closest to what I, I would be, you know, you for that one. I think you're at your best.
Mr. Dahl, is there, were there any discussions as far as methods of recruiting businesses to govern the Chisholm? Has that been, has that been a topic of discussion at all?
So the economic development committee, it's broken up into two subgroups. They're, they're now in the subgroups that are going to be working in part with each other. They're all going to be working the same way, but their focus is going to be driven in two different directions. One of the groups is going to focus specifically on zoning changes and how that could be beneficial to the city of Chisholm as far as, I don't know, zoning correctly, the land development, also maintaining our, pretty much the, the heart field of Chisholm is by keeping the open, the open space a lot and as far as trying to reorganize that in such a way that we have economic development, but it doesn't look like we're clogging everything up. The other group is going to be focused on reaching out to commercial entities and seeing who would be a good fit for our community and trying to bring them in, trying to bring them to the table. So, but until they know which directors they've added in on the task at first, it will really depend on which persons on that, that committee decide which direction to go as far as booking the suburbs.
Mr. Mayor? Our next meeting is going to be. Our next meeting is going to be August 12th, nineteenth, here at this location at six thirty PM.
Thank you, Mr. Ball.
So, you guys have the direction you want me to ask the committee?
From my perspective, I think, like you mentioned, I think that the, it's not that you need to be a big, obviously, to coordinate their content, so I think to me that's kind of our hottest, hottest item that we need to, to address.
Give me a second. I want to make sure that the council with this is because this is a economic development committee, we need to be careful on, they don't have any authority to start directing city staff for anything other than you.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that's in the, that's in our resolution documents. And anything that this group actually produces to go as, to go as to council, obviously recommendations, so, and so any, any zoning change recommendations would go through the PZ first to get it in and then it would actually, and it actually, less than, so.
Okay. Other than that, I think you get a good, nothing else, we'll move on to eight point one, building official report for August twenty twenty. Any questions? Not, we'll move on to eight point two, Sheriff Oliver's report for twenty, August of twenty twenty. Any questions? All right, moving on to eight three, legislature report for August of twenty twenty. Any questions? All right, we've got eight four, the financial fire rescue report for August twenty twenty. Moving on to that. We'll move on to eight point five, CDO D4 for August of twenty twenty. Any questions on that?
Looks like they screened through and that was proof of last.
How did that?
I wasn't able to attend, but Jason said it went up.
I think I saw that there were roughly a hundred and forty cars and I think we had less than a hundred last year, so.
That was wrong.
He said it went up, well, it sounds like people were calling in anticipation this year, they were asking at a time when it was going to be, I think, as a call service in the last, at the time, well, we did, made sure it was sent out a postcard to each council this year, described some general condition about what it was going to be and what we could, we could, the better side of events. I think it'll go a little bit of change.
Yeah, absolutely.
He said just over a week, one time a year.
All right, eight six, and I'm told the board, how are we on that?
Uh, picking up, yeah, they did ask me to, so I think if people are understanding what services are provided, they'll get a little bit of cost.
There's a lot of social media chatter, I don't know if I've seen a lot of, lots of clips or whatever, and I, I think people, once they call, I think they're surprised to know that home owner dogs will bring their dog back to them and they don't have to necessarily go all the way out of, out of the, you know.
All right, moving on to nine, council member request for future med items. All right, moving on to ten, council member reports and announcements. Mr. Trudy?
There is one comment. Last week I attended the Rockwall County Open Space Committee, uh, opportunity to attend. I think it's definitely right up the alley of our, our rural minded community, I think it's going to be a good, uh, it's definitely something that I'm excited to be part of. I think it's, it's a little bit of a misnomer and that an important aspect of it is water control, flood control, storm guard control, and that's definitely a topic that's been in my heart. So, uh, in the coming months, I'll probably come back to the, to the council with some suggestions, comments, and that's what I'm going to discuss. Um, have, have any, Mr. Ball?
Um, we still have a couple of, we spoke a couple of seats available, the attempt seats for the economic development committee, was that right? The all attempt seats, yes. Um, we would like to get those built so that way if, if for whatever reason some of the, the members can't be there, but they still have the ability for, for voting purposes. So, if anybody out there has an interest in it, I'd be greatly appreciative if you plug.
Hey, Shelly? Is Mr. Aris, is he, if he wanted to serve on economic development, is he going to do the application?
He, he, Mark, he's the, and, or adjustment.
Right.
Uh, he would give me a call, I could hand, I could, I could.
Right.
I gave an application to the, the citizen as well.
And you're still.
I think there's another one, we have, I'm going to show them again.
Ms. Ball?
I think I have a few things. The, I ordered the bricks for the install for Veterans Day, so we'll be having Veterans Day ceremony and so those bricks are in production. All those meetings, the county meetings on Wednesday, Nathan's was at seven. I went to the Rockwall Arts and Management Workgroup meeting on, at five o'clock and we approved the budget for this year, which I agreed at the last council meeting. And then Miss and I attended the road consortium meeting and probably most interesting out of that meeting is that we're doing an exercise to look at where we think roads need to, what roads need to be improved in the future. So, it's, uh, please send my phone warrant to come up with a wish list of roads that, county roads and FM roads that we think need to get improved in the next, next year, not, not anytime soon, but in years, I would say, yeah, so we'll be working on that.
So, where does that come from?
It's from the county perspective.
Just by the road standpoint?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the only thing that I have, and it was something that had slipped my mind, and they called me, is Saturday, I don't have the time, you may have to look on social media, but there is a dedication of the bridge in Rockwall, the sixty-sixth bridge, to rename it the Heroes Bridge this Saturday morning. So, many of us have a little, a little, a lot, we're expecting a, you know, a lot of support and then it's going to be followed up. There's also a, a mannequin, a train or a caravan happening on Saturday as well. Other than that, we're, we're starting into the holiday season, October here next week and Halloween's coming, which means kids will probably be out and, or you know, the national student person surgery, as well as the election and Veterans Day. Other than that, I don't have anything, anything else. If that's it, it is now eight twenty-one, since we've gone through the healthy agenda. Be here.
Okay, well, that is the end of the meeting and so no executive session, big surprise. So, we'll, we'll end it here and I hope you have a great, a great night. Thanks for tuning in. Look forward to seeing you next time. We will be doing it, don't forget, doing a show on the RCH. You're going to want to hear, you're going to want to see that, some good news. We'll see you next time.